Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, April 4, 2022, at 9:30 AM in the same location, with the exception of any continuing items. Moving on to item five, approval of the February 9, 2022, minutes, the chair will now call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes on our last meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Alexander, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to item one, staff report by Matthew Johnson.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for Assessor's parcel number 40222138 to allow for a preschool establishment for up to ten children in an AR agricultural residential zone in the vicinity vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Not seen, the applicant present. Are there any others wishing to speak on item one? Hearing received none, close of public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Hearing received none, the chair will now call for a motion on item one.
I'll move to approve item one with staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Alexander, second by Commissioner Gillette, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving on to item two, staff report by LC Mason.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take one second to introduce LC. LC is one of our new planners, she's been with us thirteen months now, and they will give her first time presented in that. I wanted to introduce her before she was ready.
All right, welcome forward, LC.
Item number two, an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 306.
Can't hear you.
401T, from an AR 10 acre agricultural residential minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone, and an AR 4A agricultural residential 4 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the middle of the valley. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Hearing received none, are there any others wishing to speak on item two? Hearing received none, close of public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Okay, chair will now call for a motion on item two.
I make a motion to approve her staff recommendations, item two.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, all those who are ready to say aye.
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Alexander, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving on to item number three, staff report by Matthew Johnson.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone for a portion of Assessor's parcel number 35101029 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 6A agricultural residential 6 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the core I vicinity. We do have a slight change in our staff recommendation that will be sent on to the Board of Supervisors because this item is for a portion of the parcel. We are adding an exhibit, which you can see on the screen now that shows which portion of the property is being rezoned at this time to a 6 acre minimum lot size zone. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Hearing received none, are there any others wishing to speak on item number three? Hearing received none, close of public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time?
I do.
Commissioner Abbott?
I'm looking at the map that shows four on one side and the subject property on the other, and I'd like to ask staff, does that mean that we are looking at a division that is going to be plus five?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Gillette, I'm not sure I fully understand your question. You're asking about how many parcels they're going to split?
Well, I understand that they're asking to change this zoning, but are they also splitting it?
Correct, yes. So they're rezoning it from a 36 acre minimum lot size to a 6 acre minimum lot size, and based on the plan that we were given, they're trying to split it into five, six acre parcels.
Does that trigger the subdivision law?
No, so five is the limit, so you can split a property up to five times as a minor land division. More than five becomes a subdivision and you have to go through the subdivision process.
That's my understanding as well, so I see that they have already split this piece of property into half, and then they split that one half of that into four, and now they want to split the other half into an additional amount, which means they will have at least eight that they own, eight parcels.
Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Gillette, so the person that owned purchasing this portion of the property is a new property owner, so it's because it's not the same person, it doesn't fall under those subdivision requirements. So they're purchasing this 40 acres from somebody else, and then just as that person that owned the lottery, of course, let their property, this person wants to use it.
I'm sorry, but I see this as a way to get around the subdivision law. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments? Okay, chair will now call for a motion on item three.
I'll call, I'll make a motion to approve her staff recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Abbott, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
I'd like to comment on this. It seems, just like you said, but as I understand it, and I've done these myself, if you sell it, you could split these like you said, and you could sell it to someone else and they can split again.
And it could be a family member.
Could be.
I just see this as getting around the law, and we're having this happen a lot.
Mr. Chair, just kind of maybe just provide a little bit more explanation. We do have regulations within our land commission regulations that state that if you find that an order is trying to aspire to divide, to go around the subdivision requirement, then we do have provisions that we can pursue as far as with the Department of Real Estate and with our county attorneys, we find that they're trying to aspire to subdivide. And this is, we checked the previous property owner, whether or not there was any relation, any surrounding property owners, whether or not there's any relation either company-wise, family-wise, we look into all those to see if there is any conspiracy to subdivide above the six plots. We did not find any of those in this situation.
Thank you.
Motion dismissed, carry. So that concludes item number three. Moving on to item four, staff report by Alexander, all.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 20417025 from an AR 13 acre agricultural residential 13 acre minimum lot size zone, and an AR 10 acre agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone, to an AR 5 agricultural residential 5 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the old highway under previous coverage. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
And to open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Hearing received none, are there any others wishing to speak on item four? Yes, sir. Did the microphone give us your main matter or source?
Yeah, my name is Craig Stapp. I live just to the west of that area, in a division where all the properties were five plus acres. That includes all roads, in other words, you ended up with a net of five plus acres. My question with regards to this is, that was 40 a year and a half ago, it's been reduced, they're reducing it again, and with respect to what was just talked about that Mr. Gillette had spoke to, what's to stop somebody who buys one of these other pieces, wants to divide it again, and we end up with properties that are less than five acres net, when the precedent is for larger lots? And so I'm wondering, what's to stop, like they spoke about, that all of a sudden you end up, somebody having an in buying one of the five acre pieces, they can go, well, I've been wanting to buy it, and we're going to make it two, two and a half. What, if the precedent is five plus acres for people to own that area, where does it end? What's, what's stopping you, mentioning that it might be that that's kind of the order that everybody is in, Mountain Shadow States, which is just, like I say, still west of what those, that property and three other forties that are all being divided right now? That's my question.
Thank you, through the conference, or any comments you have to add?
Mr. Stapp, I believe Mr. Stapp answered that question, how they could control, and if they control it like supposedly, which I don't think are perfect, if those kind of things come up though, it should not happen based on planning and only doing your job currently. That's how I see it. I've been involved in some of these things for many, many years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Abbott.
You might, you might again have Mr. Holt to come along. In fact, I would like to see more.
Mr. Chair, absolutely. One of the things, and I believe this area has a general plan designation of rural development area, I'm not mistaken, our rural development area for the general plan has a minimum acre of five acres, so if anybody wanted to split lower than the five acres, then they would have to amend the general plan in order to do so. Another thing that keeps individuals from splitting to a lot smaller lot sizes in this area would be the city, if staff takes in an application, we're looking at surrounding properties, what other zones are currently there, and does the proposed zone match that? So when we took this application and looked in the surrounding vicinity and saw those other five acre parcels, and saw that it was consistent with the current area and what tends to be proposed, somebody dealing with a lot smaller subdivisions, we would have a harder time recommending approval, one because it doesn't match the general plan, and second because there isn't any other zoning that matches that in the area. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to speak on item four? Okay, closing the public hearing, if any commissioner have any questions or comments at this time? Hearing received none, the chair will now call for a motion on item four.
I'll make a motion to approve your staff recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Abbott, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close, close. Motion dismissed, carry. Moving to item five, staff report by Rosa Garcia.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit of Assessor's parcel number 20804043 to allow for additional time for completion of the conditions of border resolution number 2017-145 in the Yerba vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay. Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Hearing received none, close of public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time?
I have a question. Sorry to keep it down in there. I don't understand what staff is recommending, I understand what they're recommending, but I don't understand why they're recommending it the way they are.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Abbott?
The extension of time, that's one question.
Yes, correct, so they originally had a special use permit that they received back in 2017. Our special use permits have expiration, based on that they need to begin the improvements within a certain timeframe. Because of this, they weren't able to meet those requirements in time, so they filed for an extension of time in order to complete those improvements. This came up, they are working on their site plan, and in the site plan review, on the most recent supplemental, came up that their special use permit had expired, and so one of their comments on that review was for them to get to see this extension of time, so that they could keep looking forward with their proposal motion.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing received none, the chair will now call for a motion on item five.
Motion to approve item five for staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Hassett, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving on to item six, staff report by Rosa Garcia.
Item number six is an evaluation request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 20705010 from an AR 8A agricultural residential 8 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 2A agricultural residential 2 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Yerba vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? Commissioner Stapp, are there any others wishing to speak on item six? Hearing received none, close of public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Hearing received none, the chair will now call for a motion on item six.
I'll move to approve item six with staff's recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Alexander, looking for a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, all those who are ready to say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Moving to item seven, staff report by Rosa Garcia.
Item number six, is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's parcel number 31614016 from an AR 2A agricultural residential 2 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden River vicinity. This item was contained from the February 9 meeting to give the commission time to review the security footage submitted. We have received two letter propositions adding up over 20% to the property owner and 20% of the land area within 300 feet, which will require a forfeit vote for the board of supervisors. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, is the applicant present? President, if there is any others wishing to speak on item seven? Hearing received none, closing the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Hearing received none, the chair will now call for a motion on item seven.
Mr. Chairman, did we, we reviewed this at our last meeting, isn't that? Mr. Chairman, if we, did we, we reviewed this at our last meeting, isn't that correct?
Chairman Jax, Commissioner Gillette, yes, that is correct. This was originally heard at the February time meeting, Commissioner.
And is this the one we got the video on?
Yes.
I believe that the reason that we postponed this was because we wanted to give this gentleman a chance to defend himself, and he is not here. That's quite right.
Chairman Jax, Commissioner Gillette, I believe when the items continue to be mentioned to give the commission time to look at the security footage, the reasons are for continuing at our url.
And it's still unclear to me why this gentleman is setting off firecrackers or fireworks in the middle of the night and racing up and down the road.
Chairman Jax, Commissioner Gillette, I don't, I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, let me just, we want to watch the borders going off on the left corner of the security.
More of an issue with the county service.
Chairman Jax, that is correct. So our, the item that we received is the application for a rezone to allow for minor land division. So our recommendation based on this surrounding area is for approval of the rezone to allow that with our standard conditions of approval.
So based upon the recommendations from staff, do I have a motion for item seven?
I'll make a motion to approve item seven with the staff recommendation.
A motion by Commissioner Alexander, twenty-four seconds. Three seconds. Second by Governor Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Maybe we should take a roll call, although.
Chairman Jax.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Hassett.
Can you give me a second?
Yep.
I guess I'm missing something. I mean, the staff recommends the approval, right? The guy was supposed to come to this meeting to answer any further questions or to defend himself against what?
Well, the neighbors are all talking about the fact that he's making all this noise in the middle of the night. He's playing loudmouth music, firing on fireworks, racing up and down the road.
Right.
And we wanted to know why.
Actually, here, sorry.
Chairman Jax, it's time to make it. The item presented to the commission is, is whether the rezone should be approved or not. Definitely the commission can take, you know, comments from neighboring properties into consideration on what it would do with it. But ultimately, any types of activities that may be legal or not is not perky of this commission. It is more to determine whether or not the rezone should be approved.
Commissioner Mule. Commissioner Mule, is it a aye or a nay?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin.
Nay.
Commissioner Abbott.
Aye, based on what staff recommend and not understanding why this affects and will change one way or another for the reapproval or not, with this action from that property. So I can be an aye.
Commissioner Alexander.
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette.
Aye, and, um.
All right, the ayes have it.
I just think there's a lot of disrespect here.
Moving to item eight, staff report by Rosa Garcia.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Stapp's parcel numbers two zero nine zero one zero nine seven, two zero nine zero one one zero zero, and two zero nine zero one one zero one from an AR thirty-six A agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lots size zone and an MX forty A housing manufacturing forty acre minimum lots size zone to an ES solar energy overlay zone to allow for a solar facility in the Griffith vicinity. Staff has received five letters of support and one letter of opposition for this item. Staff recommends approval with standard condition.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
Please turn the microphone, give us your name and address.
Morning, my name is Derek Thoreau. I'm the partner of the applicant. I was here about the process of, and I apologize that I have to take your time. Good morning. It happened that the tourist that we walked into at the time, two months ago, who did that, that's called site control, both of them, in time for the application, unfortunately had to be pushed out for the next submission application. This is quite old, hopefully the last appearance of the project. We're looking for a minimum quantity of solar energy there. We'd like to generate these parcels to energize the project in the industrial zone area. There is no power available for those to do that. It's basically a great capacity that's present. We were talking to our supervisors a month ago. We recommended the other parcels unanimously and indicated that this was one of the exact type of project for which this area would be suitable. So the inspection request to approve this final rezone request, it's a complicated parcel. But it'll enable us to get the, to move off to the implementation of the project once we have the requisite number of neighbors, zones, or so on. I'd like to ask a question for a reaction if we shared with you.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant?
I have a question. Let me figure out how to ask it first. How does this tie in with the one you brought on a couple of months ago?
It's part of the same project.
Pardon?
It's part of the same project. He would have included this parcel at the, at the document about ownership or contracts to the owner at the time to submit the application. The application that I for the higher year, it was, I think, December, sometime in December.
Okay, there's more of these forty eight of partial, no, that are, that should be sent. So how many, how many acres does this include now?
This, this includes six hundred forty acres of section, and this section is a section. So we are, we are satisfied with being able to develop the solar arrays that we need for the overall project.
And the supervisors approved the element, we go ahead.
You had just indicated this was acceptable type of project. We'd like to see the corrections and things.
Question? Yes.
Will it have fence around it?
It will have fence on it.
Will it be a privacy fence or better?
Pardon?
Will it be a, that privacy fence or better?
Whatever is, whatever is most suitable, you know, the solar farm, you have Fort Maati, you probably see all joining. They have, they have a few privacy fence.
Okay.
And few obstructive fence, which has its advantages and disadvantages.
Okay.
It's also catches a lot of debris. So we'll, we'll do what, what's, what's best for the neighborhood.
Okay.
Any questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir. We do have several individuals wishing to speak on this item. Annette Young. Commissioner, any others?
Yeah, Annette Young and the old parcel number two zero nine zero four zero zero four, right alongside Dawson, where Dawson is remote, where this project is supposed to make place. Our biggest concern is when we bought that property, it's little, two and a half acres, about ten plus years ago. We bought it as an investment for future to build something like maybe a family compound there. And we feel that with the solar bill, I know they have three hundred feet perimeter allowed that they had to notify us. Well, if you look at the drawing, the fence that you were speaking about, this gentleman, the fence is really going to be across the street from us. Three hundred feet is, you know, the perimeter, which affects several lots in that area, some that do have structures on it. I just feel like if they want to build on that property, perhaps they should look at finding out all the lots that are within that three hundred feet and that becoming more or less a dead zone where it won't impact all, you know, the people that are closest to it. I just don't think it's fair. I feel like them building is really going to take whatever property value we have right into the toilet. And we'll never be able to resell it because, let's face it, I think there's anybody in this room that would want to put a house with a fence with that wall back with the solar bill.
Thank you, if you have any questions for the, for the chairman? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have Sam O'Leary.
O'Leary.
O'Leary, thank you, too.
I have some of the same concern. I actually own. Sam O'Leary, six fifteen South Sacramento. I own a property that's Navajo in Sacramento. So I'm directly across the street, Navajo, my property is right on the corner. So my concerns are with the way they purchase the land. Are they going to be crossing our properties with any utilities as they build the solar farm?
Yes, a big question, I, I guess I would be up to the applicant, assuming they're building that. Hopefully they could work that sort of thing.
Because they're going to have to get power in and out from this location, and there's no power in the immediate area. So how is that going to impact, I'm in unit four. So we'd like to know how that's going to impact us, our property, if they have, if there's going to be any utility on them to perform their, their project. And I also am concerned with this project and Sacramento Road not being paid as far as public health, safety, dust control. How does that impact all of us that are actually out in the area, living in the area? They have children that live with dust during construction and after construction. Because it's, it's fairly substantial now. And there isn't tremendous amount of traffic, but there is enough on that dirt road that we've got a lot of dust that is current.
Those that have any comments, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, the applicant will still have to go through our site plan process. Site plan process, it's routed through all of the departments, agencies that would have a safe, would have safety in the project. So for example, we would be sending this project to our department. They would be looking at which roads could be accessed and whether or not a traffic impact analysis would be required. And if any group improvements would be required to any of those roads as well. During that site plan process, everything.
Also, unit four, I could be incorrect, so forgive me. But I believe unit four is subdivided into approximately two acre parcels, as if it's somewhat grid out like subdivision of the residential area. So I would just like to reemphasize for the last person came up. And if this, if the county has this subdivided for residential area, or is, you know, having, I, I wouldn't look at the solar farm that's out in here. And the fence that's there is a chain link fence that just has slats and it has barbed wire at the top. And it looks more like a prison style fence than something that would be for residential neighborhood. So I was glad to hear that the gentleman spoke, you know, they're willing for neighborhood. But I don't think that would be an acceptable thing for people who are actually out in that area or for the development of that area.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Go ahead.
Are there any applicants, other applicants that wish to speak on item eight? Yes, sir, come on.
Good morning, thank you. I just wanted to, Derek Thoreau, again, I just want to emphasize some of the things I, we were aware of the letter of, you know, position. Part of what we tried to look for in this area was, were, it's called complicated areas for other purposes. I particularly like to share a slide on the, on two slides from A. I'm not sure how to get to you. Okay, sure.
Any other assistance?
I think bringing that one on first. This is from, over the river, maybe towards, this is north. This is the subject parcel. And we want to highlight how impacted the area is by a key flow, the flood plain, which makes it very complex for residential development, which is how we, where we were looking. As you may recall, this parcel has now been confirmed by the board supervisors for, for this project. So this will be an edge up to the project. What is equally important is that the section is impacted by two large interstate natural gas projects. The speaker earlier, Mrs. Young, resides in this parcel. It's about five hundred feet from one of the big, one of the two big pipelines coming out of Texas going to, like, twenty. So what's up close to the gates is you have a large wash running right in front of the parcel. So we'd be, we'd be happy to work with Mrs. Young and her partner regarding mitigation, particularly in this area, because it's complex as it is. This is a pipeline, it's kind of a wash. And basically the fact that there's an area that might be very difficult to build for solar. So we'd be happy to consider accommodation by way of subwoofer area which may be best for all parties. The other aspect, and the last, I guess I'd make one word statement, that is that this is subject parcel. Again, the dark indicated parcels, these are all texted in parcels. Probably suggesting that this is a difficult area for residential development. When it comes to the, uh, power of the gas pipelines, we have experience in dealing with that. This is a, uh, a, uh, picture of where G I S map show the solar farm in Fort Mojave, where we similarly have a, uh, soft gas pipeline running through the site, so we have a way of dealing with it, which will not be the case for residential development, that probably confirms suitability of this parcel's, this progress. Uh, finally, when it comes to, uh, dust mitigation and like, probably the most likely, uh, will, will go for the, the least intrusive way to access the parcel from a construction point of view and it's highly unlikely that we'll be entering this parcel from a construction point of view, to Sacramento or, uh, or, uh, Navajo, but most likely coming from, uh, open, uh, area, because it's a short road, we'd be prepared to do whatever it takes to prevent the roads for minimum impact or disruption. Of course, these are affecting the road control projects and therefore doing right of the project that would be affecting no, no traffic, because there's nothing to do on the site. So we will work with neighbors to help ease their concerns, dust should not be a monster because we'll, you know, either say for people who want to.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Uh, sir.
Uh, I should, I have a question.
Sir, I don't think you gave us your answer.
Um, the, uh, direct call, I have this one one six one four east territory item.
Okay.
So we will, we will work with the neighbors.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
I was blanking for staff. How close is a residential that's now approved to this project? Russell.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Abbott, are you looking for a physical residence or residential owned property?
I'm not waiting that, that is zoned for residential where people like the lady spoke of buying two and a half acres or whatever it was, a short of, she, she bought that for reason and she probably wasn't, didn't buy it thinking there's going to be a solar, a solar farm right that nearby. So how close is the residential zoning that's in effect now to this project?
There is residential zoning surrounding this property. Uh, I mean, a large portion of this property is currently zoned agricultural residential with thirty six acre minimum lot size, uh, thirteen, every zone for the solar over there. Uh, and area view, it looks like we have about one, I see one in the general vicinity, might be a couple others if we go out further, uh, so maybe we can pull up the zoning map and show what the zoning is.
Could you say general vicinity? Half a mile, quarter of a mile, it's like across the street.
But it's one that's directly across the street. Uh, that's, just a quick look, there might be a few others in that section, uh, to the west of this property.
Okay.
The, the purple, uh, on the zoning map is property that is zoned agricultural residential.
Right, John. Okay. I want to go on record to say I'm totally against it and want to tell you why I'm against it. Some fifteen, eighteen years ago, I had a section of land, mile post fifteen on Stockton Hill Road, two miles east of Stockton Hill and Calis River. Had a section of land, I went through the state, I did all the things necessary, I did it right for people to build forty acre, on forty acre parcels, it was rezoned to forty acre parcels. Today, there is some very, very nice homes out there. I know a good part of the people that bought those forty acres and they would just almost kill for anything happening like this next to their forty acre parcel. So there's something wrong with allowing solar plant, a solar farm to come into residential area where people have bought for the reason that I know many of these people bought. One gentleman sold the company in Seattle and moved here and there is several hundred thousand dollar home there. So we're not protecting these people that bought this property that has already been zoned for residential and that's a real, that's a, that's a real problem, I think. And, and I'm totally against it. I, I voiced, I voted against it when the other came before us, didn't want to bring out the, the things I just brought up, but you just can't move things into an area, I think, to protect the people that have purchased land that is zoned, residential, agricultural residential forty acre, you know. So that's my, what I have to say and that's more than I say about things, but that's the bottom line fact and because these people have bought that, there's, there's same kind of people that are going to move there someday and figure out why they bought it, they're going to build homes there, or like the lady says, they bought it for an investment. So this is a problem. I, I'm against this, but board supervisors have already approved it, they'll probably go ahead, but I'd like what I say to be, be on, be on the public record.
Um, yes, just a question for staff. Um, currently it's a thirty six acre and it's also, uh, heavy manufacturing. Could you point out the area that is zoned heavy manufacturing on this parcel? Is it that, is it that little square that is in it?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Abbott, if you look at the zoning map on the screen, it's the darker blue or purple, uh, color that's heavy manufacturing up in the top right corner, uh, then you can see the one to the southeast, uh, is the one that was part of the item, um, a couple months ago, uh, for this local way that's also heavy manufacturing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Gillette.
Oh, I got to ask that. So does he have more than one in this area? We approved another one for this same company. Was it in the same area?
This is John in property.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Gillette, uh, yes, that is correct. So if you go to the section to the southeast, uh, it was a portion of the one that was, uh, done a couple months ago, um, by the same company. So this is an extension of that, uh, that one that was done.
And this is four times bigger than the one that we did before, or did we do both of those at the same time?
So we did, the one that we did last time, I don't know the exact size of it. This one is, will be smaller. The other, the one before was, uh, over two sections, this one is one section.
I think that's incorrect. This is forty acres, this is not one section. Chairman Jackson. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Abbott, if we can go back to the image.
Just a minute though, if, if you could. There's, there's surroundings given that were three forty acres, right?
The, the item before us is six hundred and forty.
Forty acres to what is already been approved by board supervisor.
If, if I'm, if, if I'm correct, yeah, um, the item before you is six hundred and forty acres, it's a section that's outlined in flat. The previous, uh, rezon that occurred, uh, at the last February, previously, uh, the board approved that their, that their last meeting was the, the section, section line six hundred and forty acres to the southeast of the one being proposed and then half of the section right at the south of that one and the section to the west of it. So another six hundred and forty plus three twenty, my math is a little slow this morning, but basically we had two and a half sections that was brought before you previously, those were approved by the board supervisors. This one is one section. So this one's six hundred and forty acres and then previously, uh, it was sixteen hundred acres, thank you.
Another section.
Another section, correct.
It was proposed somewhere around point two hundred acres.
Any other questions? Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on item eight? Okay, hearing is saying none, close the public hearing. Yes, sir. Please keep up the two minutes.
Sorry, I'll give you, uh, thirty seconds. I just want to, uh, for, Mr. Chairman, uh, we'd be happy to, uh, consider, uh, work with neighbors who probably be comfortable, she will be, no solar panel buffer zone, uh, around, so on parcel, so as to give them, uh, as needed, a, a three hundred foot buffer so that they are outside of, uh, right in that solar, she will, will have a, a solar project right here.
I just like the, pardon me on stuff, pardon me. I, I see no way you could work with people that's going to prevent the birds, the little animals and so forth that cannot live underneath those solar panels. That's been proven and they'll be gone. It changes, and, and if I was in your place, I'd probably try to be doing what you're doing. You think it's good?
Everything.
But it's really going to change that entire area out there for people who bought what was probably at one time ranch land. It was rezoned into forty acre minimum and people buy that and they, as, as we pointed out there, there's some residential joining, that, that's a problem.
They, they just direct for, for one, two seconds for this matter. We've got, this is the subject parcel, uh, we, there's only, uh, one, one of residents to a parcel, uh, in the corner, okay, right there, one, one parcel, uh, which resident, all their neighbor are, are, are units, then, who don't live there and then no lives around and to be, it's a big, the whole area is entirely vacant, if you want to be a master, buried out. It's, it's a vast vacant area with, uh, owners having given up on, uh, big properties.
I'm not so much objecting to what you're doing as I am allowing things like that to come in to an area that already has a residential joining property you want with solar panels. Don't worry, that's a problem and you won't recognize that problem unless you get back to where I was eighteen or twenty years ago with a section of land, selling it off for forty acre parcels and then people building very nice places on it, like today, they won't have this opportunity and they won't, they won't build the kind of homes I'm talking about, close by to a solar farm. It, it's, it's a problem and I don't know what the answer is, but that's a real problem.
Chairman Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to go on record, um, that I'm against this. Um, I think these people bought their properties in good faith, um, based on the general plan and I think it's, um, it's time to stop with, with doing this to them, if that's what they're doing. I'm against it.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to make a free comment on the gentleman that spoke about possibly going in and exit three hundred feet with solar panels. However, the property is the property line, so you're still going to have fence around that property line, whether you cheat those panels in three hundred feet from our front door or not, we're still going to see that. And while I like it's out there, I don't know if there's, or is he out there sleeping right now or whatever, but we did have huge plans to go out there where it was a little bit more quiet than like Calis is and so, um, it is heartbreaking. We are not one of the late ones, owners of property that have not paid their taxes. We pay our taxes, we go out there at least every few months just to check on everything and that's how we actually saw that original sign of the rezoning. So I would thank you, um, Mr. Abbott and Gillette for stating that you're opposed to this, because that makes us feel, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are you going to close the public hearing? Do you think, Mr. Jackson, have any questions or comments this time? Yeah, the chairman, I'll call for a motion on item eight. We really have a motion. Motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Calley, second. Second by Commissioner Hassett. All those who say aye. Close?
Aye.
The, 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 take the roll forward, Mr. Bishop.
Chairman Jackson. Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Hassett?
Yes.
Commissioner Mille?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
Nay.
Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Alexander?
Nay.
Commissioner Gillette?
Nay.
And Ms. Abbott.
Motion to approve. Moving on to item nine, uh, for, uh, that.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of assessment parcel number three one zero one three zero five eight from an AR ten A agricultural residential ten acre minimum lot size zone to an AR five A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone to offer a residential subdivision in the kingdom vicinity. Uh, because this is a rezoned four day subdivision, uh, in the condition of approval, uh, number two is that the rezon will be effective upon the reclamation of the final plaque, or for each day of the final plaque, if the subdivision is based, um, and then item, uh, condition board that a lot size will be based on the size of the lot reported on the final plaque, which would know for every lot of this. Uh, staff recommends approval, uh, with standard condition and those conditions.
Thank you. Open the public hearing, because the applicant does, uh, who's not here. Are there any other questions to put on item nine? Hearing is saying none, close the public hearing, goes, Mr. Bishop, got questions or comments this time? Hearing is none, chairman, I'll call for a motion on item nine.
I'll make a motion that we approve, item nine with, uh, standard, uh, staff conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Gillette, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Abbott, all those who say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion, Chair.
Chairman Jackson, can I, it's, just for a moment, can I talk to our attorney, um, quickly, because we made, on the last recommendation, on the last item, we, you did a two to six vote against the approval, but did we make a recommendation to deny the application then and is that appropriate to make that, to have that motion made?
Well, what we were just talking about does not exist. Before, your, what was a motion to approve, it was denied or did not go forward by six or two. So you can send it forward as a recommendation to deny, but to be safe, what I recommend to do is call that item back and somebody make a motion to deny, one of the six who denied it, make a motion to deny, you go again, six or two, recommending a denial on that basis.
Thank you.
So Chairman Jackson, what I recommend is call back, uh, item number. And then someone, someone will need to make a motion to, uh, to, 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 to.
I have a question. I'm a little foggy on this. We, the board, made a recommendation that was voted on and I don't, and I'm not questioning you, I'm not an attorney, I respect you very much, I don't want to ask this in the manner that shows any disrespect. Is that one more thing to do? Or I guess, I don't know if I'm asking the right question, but I just have not seen that done that I'm aware of.
What we want to do is we want to be as clear as possible to the board supervisors what you're recommending. The last motion on motion eight was a, was a motion to approve, two, there's a motion and a second, two people voted in favor of it, but six did not. So what does that mean? So what does that mean? That means that you, you did not, you did not, the motion did not carry. The motion to approve did not go forward. And so it's pretty clear that six of you are recommending denying, correct? I mean, that's why six people voted against it. So what I recommend is call back item eight. And then someone from those six making denying the, or a motion to deny the rezon. And then hold another vote again, presumably it'll be the same vote, six to two. In that way, you can then give a recommendation to the board that it's not a rezon.
I don't question that. I agree with you. But the need, it's very clear what happened to the motion was made. So let's proceed.
All right, so we're moving back to item eight. And we're asking for a motion for the deny. Well, any motion? Anybody want to make a motion here?
I make a motion that we deny item eight.
I have a second by Commissioner Martin.
I have a question before we proceed with that. With the other adjoining parcel that the supervisors approved, and turning this one down, is there going to be any legal kickback?
I don't know if it will happen. You never know until you see it happen. I can't proceed what would happen.
Well, it could or could be.
Certainly. There's always something that could happen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Can't proceed.
And I understand that part of that, I was trying to dodge the board.
Certainly, I appreciate that. But I don't know. I don't, can't proceed what happened.
So there is a lot that's actually cornered with those zones changed law, right? That was approved by the commission?
Yeah, no, I mean, you still, there's still a lot of unknowns. There's still so many unknowns of what could happen in the future. You don't know how the board is going to vote. The board may vote against your recommendation. You don't know how the board will do that.
Exactly.
I mean, you're, you're not, you're responsible to make a recommendation. And that's if the motion is on there, I can do the second. So make a vote, make a recommendation. Make a recommendation to the board. And the Board of Supervisors will decide whether to go along with that or make a recommendation or go against that.
I would never disagree with your recommendation. So I was just thinking something to clarify what I thought had already happened.
Oh, certainly, certainly. And I thought, I thought as well, but this is my, my.
The reason.
Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that I think that, I hear from down at the other end, that they are confused why we're rejecting this one when we approved the last one.
Very much.
That seems to be the question.
I'm not confused, I'm shocked.
So my answer to that is, when is enough enough? When are we going to stop putting these, these farms, these, I don't know what we call them? Solar farms. When are we going to stop putting them in residential areas? How many are we going to put? Are we going to burn every single residential area in the, in the whole of our area? I mean, enough is enough. And that's the reason we say no.
That same residential area that we have, thank you, the same residential area that there's also, what was the other zoning in there? Manufacturing?
Yes.
But it's not that. It's like up in the corner. And now all the corner, it's not intermittent.
No, it's the same section.
All right, so I believe we have a motion.
Do we have a motion outside?
Chairman Jackson. Commissioner Kelly.
Nay.
Commissioner Hassett.
Nay.
Commissioner Mille.
Nay.
Commissioner Martin.
Well, can we clarify that the...
The motion on the floor is that to deny the requested rezon.
I agree with the motion.
Okay.
Do you vote it?
He can change his mind. He could perครับ change his mind if he was to change. One night it's that, sure.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes. Commissioner Abbott?
I am against it. So, no.
No, we yes. That's what I'm saying.
You want to vote?
Yeah.
That's the point I want to make. So let's clarify, how do you want us to vote for? If we approve it?
Are you approving to deny the application?
Say yes.
Motion to deny.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Alexander.
Aye.
She said aye.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Gillette.
Aye.
So we've now gone to a four to three vote. So this passes. To deny it. Thank you. Oh, wait. One. Sorry. Missing one. Kelly was no. Sorry about that.
Chairman Jackson, Mr. Martin, Commissioner Abbott, Commissioner Alexander, and Commissioner Gillette, all of it. Yeah, they wrote a motion.
Correct, correct. So that's five, or three to, or five to three. And the motion passes to deny. Sorry about that.
All right, so that moves us from item eight. And we have, we do item nine. So we move on to item ten.
Item number ten is an evaluation of a request for a correction of Board of Supervisors Resolution two thousand and twenty dash zero zero four to correct the conditions of approval to rezon assessors parcel number one two zero two two zero three seven to an A R five A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone. Back in two thousand and twenty, when this resolution was initially approved, in the conditions of approval of the resolution, there was an error that stated that the property would be rezoned to an agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone instead of the requested agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone. So with the way that the conditions of approval were written, it basically did not rezon the property. So we're going to need to correct this resolution so that the conditions of approval say that the property will be rezoned to an A R five A agricultural residential five acre minimum lot size zone. Stat recommends approval of this correction.
All right, thank you. Opening the public hearing. Is anyone wishing to speak on item ten? Hearing is saying done. Close the public hearing. Does any official have questions or comments this time? Hearing is standing. None. Chair, I'll call for a motion on item nine.
I make a motion that we approved, I understand.
A motion by Commissioner Gillette. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abbott. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on to item eleven. Stat report item under twelve.
Item eleven is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Hobbie County Land Department, Section thirty seventy K three, to establish a recreational vehicle in the park model units to allow for dependent park model units as temporary and accessory residence. Warning, stat is looking to add to the question that dependent park models can also be permitted as temporary residence or as an accessory residence in a managed by a recreational vehicle required on the property.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on item eleven? Hearing is saying none. Close the public hearing. Does any official have questions or comments this time? Hearing? Yes.
Just for clarification for my benefit, the item here is stating that the park models will be used as temporary and accessory residence, but not permanent residence. Because I know we, we were looking at park models previously, and they don't come to the same standards. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Alexander, that's exactly correct. We came upon this issue a month ago, where we had an individual that was looking to permit their park model unit on the property same as they would an RP. And because the park model unit didn't have holding tanks, the way that our words are written, there was no way for them to be able to do that. Essentially, you're correct, the park model unit is not built to HUD standards or building those standards. Essentially, we consider them an RP for a travel trailer. And they're built those kind of standards. So we would like to present it the same as an RP for a travel trailer. But because we find a dependent park model different than independent park model, this individual is not able to, in order to place their park model unit, they're going to have to put holding tanks on their park model unit just to hook up the setting. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And by adding the park model units to be allowed as temporary residence, just like an RP would, and as an accessory residence, just like an RP would, what is that problem?
Yes, I remember the staff did an excellent job of, for the commission outlining the differences. And my concern then was electrical. And anything making that a permanent residence goes very much against what I think would be appropriate. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing is standing. No questions. Chair, call for a motion on item eleven.
I make a motion to approve item eleven with stat recommendations.
Second motion.
A motion by Commissioner Alexander. Do we have a second by Commissioner Gillette? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on to item twelve. Requesting for a penitentiary release.
Item number twelve is an evaluation of a request for a decision of Board Supervisors Resolution two thousand and twelve dash one eighteen, calling properties to revert from an R O single family residential manufacturing home prohibited zone back to an A R agricultural residential zone and an R M P single family residential manufacturing home zone, having not met the conditions of approval in the formal Hobbie District. So this is additionally approved for a rezon to an R O zone to allow for a residential subdivision back to December of two thousand and twelve. The zoning, the vesting of that resolution was conditioned upon the reportation of the final flat. As of this date, the final flat is not admitted and the site is not sufficiently approved that it was initially intended and conditionally approved for. So stat recommends that A R resolution number two thousand and twelve, that twenty-eight eight years, and that the zoning reverse back to A R agricultural residential, R M P single family residential manufacturing home.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Are there any people wishing to speak on item twelve? Hearing is standing. None. The public hearing. Does any official have questions or comments this time? Hearing is done. Chair, I'll call for a motion on item twelve.
Make a motion to approve item twelve, stat recommendations.
A motion by Commissioner Hassett. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Alexander. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Moving on to item thirteen. Want to report, want to report to the South PA email? Moving on to item fourteen. Commissioners' comments, limited to announcements of availability, and the conference. Request for a deny to fifty-three and request for a report from the staff. I have any additional comments? Hearing is standing. Moving on to item fifteen. Call the public. We have a new addition to address the commissioners. Call the public. Hearing is standing. Request for a motion for a denial.
Motion to...
A motion by Commissioner Martin. Second.
Second motion.
Commissioner Alexander, all those who favor say aye. We are at our turn.